The regular council meeting for Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. If we could rise for the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Alvarado, would you lead us, please?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Socorro.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yeah, I mean, here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deanne.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Calendino.
Here, all present, and we have a call. Tonight's a special night, I'm gonna hand it over to interim chief Kaluzny. If you could take the mic. Check that it's on too, sir, if you could, and everybody in the council.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. I come to you with some good news here from the police department. This is one of the, the good things here that, that we enjoy to do from the police department, and that's welcome a new officer here to the force. I'd like to introduce Utica Police's newest addition to our department, Mr. John Jones. John began his public service in, in the United States Navy as a military police officer, where he spent seven years in the Navy. John attained the rank of petty officer second class, and then after getting out of the Navy, John continued his public service, where he worked as a dispatcher for the city of Roseville, and also dispatcher for Seriso, which is the multi-jurisdictional dispatch agency. John recently was an officer with the Richmond Police Department prior to coming and joining our department. John has associate's degree in law enforcement and a bachelor's degree from Ferris State University in criminal justice. John is also a recent graduate in the Macomb Police Academy, which we have a couple members here outside of, of his graduating class. When John is not working, he enjoys hunting, spending time with his family, and traveling to his children's sporting events of which he says takes up all his time, and I, I can definitely relate with how that is. Tonight, John is, is joined with, with his family, with his mother and his wife Stacy, and also one of his daughters here for his formal swearing in. Stacy will be pinning John's badge on for tonight's ceremony. John and Stacy, if you can meet the mayor up front for the official swearing in.
If I don't even get a Navy vet, I've been kind of a loner. If you could repeat after me, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
The Charter for the city.
The Charter for the city.
Of Utica.
Of Utica.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
And the general orders.
And the general orders.
Of the Utica Police Department.
Of the Utica Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
For the city of Utica.
For the city of Utica.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And I will give you the honor, I see we're getting, we're getting slick here. I like it.
Work smarter, not harder.
We don't want harpens come, right?
Technically, she's not an employee.
If you could make your rounds, I'm sure all council members shake their hands.
Awesome, George, I'm being Jones.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. Enjoy me.
I was too.
Well, we'd like to thank Officer Jones's family for attending tonight. You're welcome to stay with us for the rest of the council meeting, it's, you know, maybe not the best entertainment choice in the world, but you're more than welcome to stay. Congratulations. We're thankful to have him in our police department. Thank you again. Everybody's mic's on, right? All right. Tonight, we have no unfinished business. I would be looking for a motion to approve all the items that are under consent business tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the items listed in our consent business.
Motion by Deanne.
I support.
Support by Robinson. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socorro.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. We have no correspondence, other, under new business. We do have a request for a resolution declaring May 2023 as ALS Awareness Month. The petitioner was our very own Councilman Brad O'Donnell. I'm gonna hand it over to you, sir.
Why, thank you, sir. I am hoping, in your packets, I suppose I should just read the...
Yeah, let's read it into...
The motion, yeah. So, I move to adopt the resolution in the May 2023 council packet titled Resolution Declaring May 2023 ALS Awareness Month. What does that resolution say? I'll go quick. Whereas amitrophic lateral sclerosis, ALS, also known as Lou Gehrig's disease, is a progressive neurodegenerative disorder that affects the nerve cells in the brain and spinal cord. Whereas ALS is a fatal disease that affects individuals of all ages and backgrounds. Whereas there is currently no cure for ALS, and the life expectancy for an individual with ALS is between two and five years after the date of diagnosis. Whereas the state of Michigan has the highest prevalence of ALS in the Midwest. Excuse me. Whereas the spouses, children, and family members of individuals with ALS provide support to those individuals with love, day-to-day care, and more. Whereas the city of Utica recognizes the importance of dedicating a month to raising awareness of ALS and its effects on individuals, families, and communities. Therefore be it resolved that the Utica City Council hereby proclaims the month of May as ALS Awareness Month in the city of Utica.
So who?
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council?
I stole the format for this from, I think, the governor of Arkansas, the, the whereas.
It's close, it's close to what we use, yeah.
Yeah, 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 so that's why it looks like that.
It looks great. And thank you very much for bringing this to council.
No problem.
Councilman O'Donnell, much appreciated.
I feel I should mention, for the record, that my dad passed away from ALS in January 2022. It is a disease I would not wish upon my worst enemy. My dad was a, before he was diagnosed, my dad was a pretty big bulky guy, I think like Tom Deanne, only maybe six inches shorter.
A little more handsome, too, I think.
Just only a little more handsome, yes. A little more hair. And, and by the end of the two years, I mean, the guy was 90 pounds, he couldn't eat, couldn't swallow, certainly couldn't walk, lift his arms, so, like I said, it's a disease I would not wish on my worst enemy. My hope with this is to, again, raise awareness, share some facts with the public. And thank you.
Thank you for bringing that forward. Any further discussions from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socorro.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries.
Can I just ask, do you know the reason why Michigan leads the nation?
There are many theories. The high rate of industrialization and sort of, like, you know, industrial waste and runoff and whatnot could be a factor. There is actually a weak genetic factor to it, so it, you know, is my great-great-great-grandfather might have had something, right? So that's the long answer, the short answer is no. There's really no easy.
Answer.
Answer, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we already took a vote. I would be looking for a motion to change the order of the agenda because we accidentally missed public comments for items listed on the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by Terrencey. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socorro.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries, thank you. That being said, I would like to open the floor for any public comments for items that are listed on the agenda. This would be your opportunity to speak to any of those items right now. And if there are any, is anybody that would like to make comments, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. Yes, ma'am?
Does that include, like, a water bill problem, or no?
He's already on the agenda, sir.
You're on the agenda, so you're fine.
Okay, so...
No, so you'll wait, you'll, you'll have your own thought.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. He said come forward.
I know.
That's okay. Anyone else? All right. Next on the agenda is the M-59 visioning grant. I will go ahead and handle this one. The Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce is leading an effort to form a consortium consisting of all the communities that abut M-59 Hall Road. The purpose of this consortium is to address the socioeconomic factors facing M-59 and to ensure the future viability of that corridor. Many communities, including Utica, rely on M-59 and depend on its continued success. At our initial meeting of this group, it was determined that the first step should be to engage an engineering firm to be determined to perform a visioning study and give all the communities comprised in this consortium an idea of what needs to be done. The consortium, it has proposed to get a grant from SEMCOG in the amount of $50,000. The member communities would split that cost. Utica's portion of the match is $582.14. This is a federal grant with expenditures scheduled in fiscal year 2024. So there's also information in your packet about, you know, what this group is doing and what the SEMCOG grant is all about. So tonight, I would be requesting a motion to agree to support the M-59 visioning grant with a commitment toward the total match not to exceed $600.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Deanne, any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is the vision here from SEMCOG, I'm seeing a lot, you know, as I read this, it's, you know, visioning, how we want M-59, blah, blah, blah. Who is the "we"?
It's the individual community. SEMCOG is only involved because they're offering to give us the grant, all the communities.
So the, the grant is for building a visioning document, or...
An engineering company to, you know, have consultations with all the community leaders and come up with a plan of how they think we should move forward with M-59 for the future.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mayor.
So there's no, there's, oh, you're welcome. So there's no other commitment at this point, other than this grant, you know, anything further would have to come to council again. You know, if there was any spend involved, you know, if they decided they want to put up another golden halo sculpture or something like that, that would all have to come to council once again, so...
Ours would probably be, like, size appropriate, we'd get, like, a tire, a size of a tire, it'd be our golden.
It would have to be a big U or something, right?
It's fine, too. Wait, that's kind of cool. Let's do that.
So we have the motion and the support, any other discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socorro.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries, thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is the 45893 Brunel Sewer Bill. Mr. Paul Licari, I believe, is the petitioner tonight. Now's your chance to step up to the podium, sir. Thank you. If you could state your name and address, even though I already did.
Okay. My name's Paul Licari, 45893 Brunel. And my concern is the water bill that's been handed down to me from the city, and it concerns a leak that was in the crawl space of the, under the house, and I believe it rose up to something like $3,000, but I thought we had it fixed in a week's time, or maybe two weeks' time, so I'm not quite sure how it rose to that amount of money. So, since it did, I paid $1,692. And I paid $1,692 to the city already, and then the water did not go down to the sewer, and I did not use the sewer because it's a crawl space with dirt underneath it. So the water that did leak went into the ground. So it, it missed the sewers. So I heard that some of the bill is on sewer and some of it's on the water, and I'm looking for a little break on the bill, on the whole amount. It seems a little high, and maybe the meter might be defective, I'm not sure, but it'd be nice to have a check by the city water department, and I'm asking for a lower amount of money on the bill.
Do you live in this residence, sir?
My brother did, me, it started with me and my brother, then my brother lived in it. It's our house, and then he passed away Thanksgiving. So the house was empty December and January. January is when we found out that it was leaking under the house. It's hard to monitor under your house at all times.
Mr. Lang, have we verified that this leak, this water break was in the crawl space and did not affect sewer flow?
No, that's, we haven't been asked to look at anything. This might be the second time I'm hearing of this actual, you know, issue, but as far as where it's transpired and what's happened and, you know, how it all came about as far as verifying the leaks or whatnot, and whether or not it had gone down the sewer, no, we have not been to that residence.
Mayor, may I?
Certainly.
DPW went and shut the water off at the request of Mr. Licari on January 17th, although the water had been leaking for quite some time, he had already used 96 units of water because of that leak, and before it was actually fixed, they used an additional 150 units of water with that leak. So we did shut the water off at that time.
And that was at the request of Mr. Licari?
Mm-hmm.
Is Mr. Licari's water bill up to date, other than these new charges?
If the council forgives or waives the sewer charges, which total $2,531.73, Mr. Licari will still owe $391.24 on his, of his bill.
And it seemed the original request was to waive the sewer fees, it sounds like you're asking to waive the water charges as well?
Well, I just don't understand how that much water accumulated under the house. Now, when we shut the water off, January 17th, it was fixed within a day, the leak in the pipe, and when we were under the, not me, per se, but when the plumber was under the house, it wasn't all muddy, we didn't find any water standing under the house. It absorbed in the ground, I guess, that fast, which seems kind of...
I mean, the one billing period, you had 96 units, which is a lot of water.
Yeah.
The next one, up to the time you turned it off, was 150 units of water, which was a hell of a lot of water, okay? That's not just a little leak, okay? So I, I can't imagine you didn't see mud or water or it escaping someplace, okay? I'm very honest, I, I am the not-so-nice-water guy up there.
And the man that repaired it and went under the house didn't come out all muddy, he didn't come out with mud all over his boots, all over his jacket, and he did make the repair a few days after it was reported.
Mr. Lang, did you have some input?
I don't think there's anything that this council can do tonight until the DPW at least looks at what was there. I don't believe in any way, shape, or form that your meter was bad, the water was used.
No, I trust Bill, take a look, or maybe his men can take a look under there and they'll verify what I'm saying.
I just thought for our peace of mind.
Oh, and that is fine, for any consideration, I think, on this council.
Uh-huh.
I have to rely on his expertise and his people to say what there was.
Well, I tried to get them out there.
I, okay, I'm, I'm going to rely on that. I will tell you, I am the worst one up here of granting water relief, okay? Because you say you didn't see anything, you didn't have any mud, this went on for two months, okay? Something had to be known, so...
That's a lot of money for two months, even with the leak.
It could be a hell of a leak, okay? You used one heck of a lot of water, not used, wasted, or leaked.
Right.
But that is not necessarily...
I'm not, I'm not saying that it didn't leak.
Our responsibility. And at that much water, I don't imagine, something had to go someplace.
But we turned it off as fast as we could.
Well, but unfortunately, that was way too late, so...
Ma'am, you'll, you'll have to go up to the mic, ma'am.
I, I'm just saying is...
I'll handle it, I'll handle it.
I, I, I would not recommend for this council to do anything, as of this moment, you're still on the hook, okay? Until his department, the experts in water and sewer, can come back to me and just say the condition of what was there.
That would be fine.
Unfortunately, we didn't get to see a picture of what your plumber really saw. I don't know if it was muddy or not, you're telling me it's not, and I'm not calling you a liar.
Right.
But this would be tabled, but I, I, at least till next one month, I would suggest you get your water bill at least paid off to where it should be, and then we will deal with the sewer charge.
Well, I did.
Quick question, when was the repair made?
I shut the water off, I believe, on January 27th.
When was the repair made?
The next day.
Okay. Can I just say, if there's a gap between the time that it was shut off and the time that repair was made, it would stand to reason that there was no water standing, but if it was that soon, then one might think that there could be some water down there.
Yeah.
Mr. Lang?
The next day it was repaired.
To follow Councilman Socorro's lead, I'd like to offer our services to go and look at and assess what happened, potentially, and come up with an opinion, either offer it to council or the mayor, and whoever you appoint to, or bring it back for your determination as to what to do. There's a couple of things that I'm curious about. No water, no water under the house actually bodes, actually works against you in the fact that if you did have a large leak, it should be wet. 150,000 gallons of water lost in a short amount of time, it's going to be wet, there should be trenches and whatnot. I'm suspicious, potentially now, trying to use the right words, there could still be a leak in the house. Turn the water on and see if the house is actually using water. That's very common, a toilet stuck, things like that. So with the water, if the water's currently off, that works well, we can go in, assess what we see, see if there's been a repair from a plumber, try to verify that, look at where potentially the water did go. If it was 96,000 gallons and then 150,000 gallons, that's 240, 44,000 gallons of water that went somewhere. If it didn't go down a drain, it went under the house where this repair is, there will be absolute signs of that happening, because you can't have a small drip to generate that amount, in that amount of time. We've yet, in my 38 years of being in the business, we've yet to find a meter that reads incorrectly, they'll read slow, they don't read fast. So chances are, there's not an issue with the meter, we've yet to see that. Always, the water had, anytime a water, as long as the, the register in the meter matches the reading on the report, which they typically always do, the water was used. Now, whether it went down the sewer, we can try to draw an assessment as to what happened there and give council an opinion.
That, that's what I'm trying to say.
So there is a chance that they'll at least waive the...
I, all I can do is report what we see, and that falls on these folks.
I, I think what we need at this point, Mr. Licari, is a clear request, you know, originally the request was to waive sewer fees, that's typically what council will...
The sewer, yes, that's completely different, correct?
That is completely different.
Water, and then going down the sewer. So if it leaked under the house, it couldn't possibly...
Typically, council, when we have waived fees in the past, it's for sewer, if it can be proven that the water didn't make it to the sewer.
Oh, I'm sure he'll agree with that.
We have not ever approved, in my knowledge, a waiving of water fees, because if we waive that for you, that means your neighbors are paying your water bill, right? That water, I don't think there's a dispute that that water was used.
If, if it didn't go down the sewer, they're not, my neighbors aren't paying for that.
They're paying for the water consumption.
Okay.
That water, even if it got poured into the ground.
Yeah.
That water was still used.
Just the water that was used.
Right. So typically, when we have waived any of the fees in the past, it's been for only sewer charges, but we need that verified, that that's indeed where the water went.
Okay.
Okay?
That's fair.
So I think we need a motion to table this until next month.
I'll make a motion to table this to next month for the DPW to investigate the leak, where it went, did it go in the ground, was there a leaky toilet, something else? Because if it did go through and was a leaky toilet and flowed into the sewers, there's no question, you're on the hook. If we can prove or come close to proving it went in the ground, close to, then there might be consideration, no guarantee.
That's what I'm asking for, yes.
Support.
Motion by Socorro, support by O'Donnell.
Sorry, clown. That was the mother of all...
Any discussion from council?
Can I ask just one thing? I, to put their mind at ease, they have had two regular reads since this incident. I do not believe there's anything wrong with their meter at all, I just wanted to say that.
And we also need that water bill paid current, you know, we can, we've tabled the request for waiving this, these charges, but any other water and sewer charges that were not part of this request, including from, you know, from that day forward, like right now, their current bill...
The $391.24?
Yeah, that bill needs to be up, up to date. Any other discussions from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socorro.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries, thank you, sir.
Okay. Am I dismissed?
Yeah, you are. Make arrangements with Mr. Lang, he'll have a crew out there, whatever he deems necessary.
Bill? Okay, yeah, you've been there before, so, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent, have a great night.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda is the sidewalk lease fee reduction request from Anna Indiana Nolan of Vinod Vibes. I think we have a representative tonight? Yeah. And please state your name and address.
My name is Anna Nolan, I'm the owner of Vinod Vibes Wine Bar. So actually, my wife could not make it, she's the other owner of the wine bar, she's running the business right now, but I did come with Michael, he's the owner of Coast across the street, and we're kind of both interested into, in this, so if you don't mind him coming up here. Anyway, so this is going to be our third summer into business, and the first summer when we opened in 2021, fortunately, we could not do the patio, outdoor patio, because it was a very short-staff situation, if you guys remember, we simply could not run outdoor. So last year was our first time opening patio, and the city actually gave us a reduction because it was post-COVID, you know, it was kind of like sketch, I guess, at the time, and it was really, really good, and we appreciated it a lot, and it was very helpful, so we were trying to... So we were trying to see if we could get a reduction again for ourselves and businesses like Mike's too. Uh, because, you know, our patio is teeny tiny. It's not like we rely on that sitting a lot. It's only four tables in our case, for Mike's, it's only five tables, I believe. And we open later in the day at three o'clock, we close at ten most of the time. We're on the northern side, so people usually don't tend to sit like, you know, in the shade where it's kind of chilly. This isn't kind of short, so, I don't know. The fee right now kind of like doesn't make sense in a way because literally this sidewalk lease, uh, fee costs more than our food license. So it's, if you kind of like, you know, evaluate and look about, at this, yeah, so.
We've raised a lot of fees since I've been the mayor. That isn't one of them. That fee has been around, I think, for, when you were mayor, did you raise the fees?
We just initiated that idea, but, to my experience, to my knowledge, we, that was originally, just came about when, when we were, during that administration, I don't think they had it the previous. I could be mistaken and I think that fee was established at that point.
Mm-hmm.
Like for Satman?
Yeah, Sat. Well, Satman did do, didn't he?
Yep.
And Danny James.
Well, that building's been vacant for so long, I've almost forgot that existed.
Right, I mean, I've heard that, let's say Shamrock, Muldoons, apparently their patios, obviously they are way bigger than ours. They do general, generate a lot of traffic and apparently this is like a part of their lease, right?
They own that, they own their property.
Right, they don't lease from the city. We do, we have to, we have another choice. Uh, but again, like, it's such a small area that it doesn't really make sense to pay that much, so. It's so tiny, it's for little tables.
Mayor Protem?
You know, your, your Muldoons and Shamrock have very large areas.
I agree.
But they pay it in taxes.
And that's what I'm saying.
Not in the fee, so let's not even bring them into play. So you were waived and had a discount last year. So this year, we're trying to bring it up to what it was. We understood post-COVID.
Right.
Now, it's if that, if you're saying that truly, and I'm not trying to be crass, because I own two businesses, okay? If it's not worth the bang for the buck, then honestly, don't put the tables out there and operate inside.
I think first, before we make that decision, I need to bring it to you guys.
And that is, that is fine. I'm just speaking that for that luxury, okay, of having outside scene.
I wish I could say there was luxury, but it's more of a slight bonus than a luxury. That brings us so much.
I, I understand, but this fee really been.
I agree, but it's not like luxury.
If I could add, um, my business, Deanna's business is the only business that.
I can neither find the fee schedule nor the originating ordinance.
Cause we're, I guess, townhouse setup, so we would have to go onto the sidewalks. And I believe the, the goal of downtown Utica's.
Please stay in front of the light, please.
Oh, uh, Michael from Host, um, I believe the goal of downtown Utica is to be a more walkable, enjoyable place for everybody. I think we're adding to that and to say that, hey, you can just go inside and not be business outside. I think it contradicts the fact that we want Utica, especially during the warmer months, to be a place for everybody to enjoy the outdoor spaces, uh, like businesses like Anna and myself. So, uh, and with regards to your point about Shamrock pays taxes, they pay, I think, three or four grand a year. I pay twenty grand a year and, and, and then I'm also paying a sidewalk tax on top of it, so.
Well, I think the true difference is Shamrock owns the property that their patio's on.
I'm not saying Shamrock, like, they have the outdoor patio and they have every right to make it what it was. I'm saying technically this fee is only a tax on mine and Anna's business because of where our property sits in the downtown traffic area.
It's not a tax at all, it's, it's a rent, because you're renting that property from the taxpayers of Utica. They own that property, they're going to be the ones that have to. We're going to use their money to repair that sidewalk eventually, to maintain that sidewalk.
I have another question, I'm not sure, I'm, I really don't hold this information, but what about locker room and their patio?
They pay a lot more, they pay twenty-four hundred dollars a year. They are renting that property from the city. The city, just like the sidewalk in front of your business, the city owns the property that they're using.
And how many tables do you think they have?
I don't know, that was a, a number that was voted on by city council, the twenty-four hundred.
I don't know.
And I think it's a five-year or six-year, six-year lease. So there's also the benefit to the city of knowing that they're guaranteed twenty-four hundred dollars in revenue for six continuous years.
We're just trying to say that we are trying to bring traffic to the downtown Utica. And like I mentioned in the request, the initial, you know, agenda form, that we've kind of tried to learn the traffic by far. And it's not all that busy in summer to be like, hey, like, yes, like outdoor sitting is so much worth it and like it's bringing so much money to us. But it's a great bonus and it's a great visibility and it's good for the city to have that option as well. So if we could reduce it, that would be amazing and very helpful for small businesses like ourselves.
Mr. Armstrong, how, obviously I've only been here for a few months on the city council, but can someone tell me how that six hundred dollars was determined?
Um, like I said, that fee has been longstanding. It, it's not something I set and I don't think the previous administration said it either. So it's, that's been the fee for many years. We've not raised it. It's actually seven hundred dollars for your initial year, if I'm not. Seven fifty for your first year and then it drops to six hundred for every subsequent year. And again, I couldn't tell you the year that was implemented, but it's at least two administrations ago.
So may I ask, um, what kind of reduction are we actually looking for?
I really liked the first one last year, I think it was like three fifty or something like that, that was very.
Have you considered maybe entering into contract with the city and then maybe having a longstanding contract? And maybe that's a conversation you could have, uh, for that leasing at year after year? And maybe that would be a consideration the city might do. I, I have no idea if that's something that's been considered. Like we did enter into contract with the locker room and they've said they're going to come back repeatedly every year. So maybe if you were entering the contract, the city could entertain that conversation.
I think we all intend as well, we're in business during the warm months to offer a patio. I mean, as long as we're in business, um, we hope to be a part of downtown Utica, uh, for as long as Shamrock's is there.
Right.
I think you guys have both brought a lot of excitement and really neat, a higher end entertainment value to the city for sure.
Yeah, I think we, we add, um, like you said, uh, something new to the city that attracts all different demographics, which I think is good for downtown Utica and McComb County in general. We, uh, we've been fortunate enough to trade business back and forth.
Yeah.
We hear a lot about that from customers about, they come to our restaurant, then you go grab a glass of wine at Vinod Vibes or vice versa. So, uh, we built a great relationship and, uh, that's why I'm here to support, uh, Deanna and Anna. I already paid the fee, but.
But, uh, I, I, I'd like.
I'm a sucker.
I'm, I'd be open to maybe looking at the six hundred dollars and reevaluating that, but, but to give special treatment to one client over another, I think that's a slippery slope. And I don't think anyone on council would disagree, the value both of your businesses have been to downtown Utica. Absolutely. I think we, all, all of us love both of your businesses, you know?
Thank you.
I, I think you're doing great things, uh, you're getting a lot of, uh, attention from the media. So that's not really the, the, the point of discussion here. The real point is that property is owned by the taxpayers, right? By the people who pay taxes to the city. And it would be irresponsible for us as council to not recoup some of the maintenance costs for allowing a business. You know, if we got rid of the fees or if we reduced them to a certain level, what would keep every business on Utica from saying, you know, you don't have to be a restaurant or, or a bar? I mean, they could say, well, I want to put tables outside or I want to put my inventory outside. You know, this is just one of the mechanisms to ensure that our downtown stays the way we want it to be and also to make sure that we're recouping costs for the taxpayers, because they're the ones who actually own that sidewalk.
If I could, Mayor, can I just add? When we originally talked about this, just to bring some, um, background to it, one of the issues too is that if there was not a payment, we would be allowing a private business to profit off, um, public property and legally, we can't do that.
Right, for sure, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so I, I just want to clarify and understand. The, what is that fee is actually paying for? It's paying for the rental space to, to recoup costs for repair to that sidewalk, including manpower and whatever we actually have to physically replace that sidewalk, correct, right?
Correct.
So it would be reasonable to believe that if we were to reevaluate the sidewalk cost, it should be charged based on square footage, how much space they're actually using. So versus Vinod Vive only having four tables, or Host, which has five tables, versus the locker room, which has however many tables, which would be based on square footage, based upon how much it actually costs to replace that pavement, including man hours coming from DPW and I think along those lines. That's what it should be based on, so I, I'm not.
Once again, these fees were set a very long time ago and they haven't been raised for a very long time. Um, it's definitely a topic worth exploring, but I don't know if that's exactly the scope of things tonight. The other thing that concerns me is it sets precedent, right? If we reduce it for one business, I guarantee I'm going to get a call from other businesses that are paying that fee tomorrow to reduce theirs as well.
Well, I don't think, I don't think this is a request for that, though. This is in a request to have their.
Yeah, just theirs.
Well, that's not what this says, this is.
Request for sidewalk.
For their own, yeah.
Is it for their own or was it for?
And as Mike mentioned, he's already paid his and I don't think you're requesting, at least, it's not on the AIS form. You will be here next month, though, if we reduce.
No, no, this, this says reducing the fee.
And when I initially talked to Deanna about the sidewalk lease, just a little background story, she goes, oh, it's like twenty bucks. I'm like, oh, cool. Uh, then I went to go do my sidewalk lease, it was like seven fifty. I'm like, whoa, uh, it's already April, May, I want to get my patio out, cause Shamrock's is slammed because of the warm days that we do have and I want to take advantage of that, so I'm like, I'll just pay it.
Yeah, you're kind of making an argument for us, because you hear about this and the next, next guy's like, oh, well, I should pay this. I'd like to reevaluate and maybe check what other municipalities.
There's a potential this fee could go up. The city attorney, cause it should be based on property value as well. So I mean, that could be a can of worms you don't really want to open.
What other property downtown pay, would have, yeah, would have to pay that fee? We're the only, I guess, townhouse style, uh, restaurants in that strip.
But you could have State Farm come up and say, we want a place for our employees to sit outside during lunch or after hours, we're just going to enjoy the sunshine, what the mayor brought up, and they want a sidewalk. They want a fenced area.
What's wrong with that?
Well, but for that though.
If more people are, when people want to hang down, hang out downtown, when more people are hanging out downtown, what, what necessarily is wrong with that?
It's a nice, walkable downtown.
Are they going to pay that? Or you are also making it more difficult to walk down the sidewalk, because you are now walking up to the fence, going out posted.
We're leaving comfortable five feet from walking, which is ADA as well.
Mayor Protem speaking.
I am saying there is an advantage for you to do this, okay? You are trying to generate business, income money. And as you said, it may not be worth it for you to do. That is a, and I'm, I'm talking to you as a business person that's owned businesses for forty-plus years, okay? This is not my first rodeo. Everything you do in your restaurant, everything you calculate, the price of your drink, your food, is based on what can it generate for you. So you want the visibility and all that, and I say, that's fine. But you are still occupying a sidewalk, you're still taking up space and you're using city property, okay? Um, if you're, you can only have five tables, is your building narrower than what your building is? Cause that's how many you can put in there, or are you trying to jam one more in? That I can't tell.
Why don't we get a motion on the floor so we can, we really should deliberate this after a motion?
There's no motion.
Well, I mean, there's not a, I think the intention here, like I, like I said, I mean, this doesn't, they're not asking for their fees to be reduced. They said, we hope the city considers reducing the fees for small businesses. I think this is just a request to reevaluate the law, which I think is a reasonable request.
As do I.
Given everything that's been discussed.
I, I think it's reasonable to re, to reevaluate it, but I also agree with, with the mayor, it might be a double-edged sword. We don't know until we actually evaluate it.
We would have to come, right now it's a flat fee. We would have to come up with a criteria for, you know, square footage. It would have to probably be tied to the value of the property itself, uh, a whole bunch of, how much square footage they're requesting.
Maybe how much frontage the building has.
Right. So what does a motion look like that we would make to evaluate this and what, what does that process look like?
But at the same time, if you wish to open, you're going to need to pay the fee. Plain and simple, you want the sidewalk, at this point, the fee exists. There's no variance, there's no work session, there's no anything, you paid the fee. If you wish, you already now are, in your second year, you're in the discounted fee. You got a deal last year because of COVID. You opened after COVID, okay? So, and I appreciate you being here. Um, but at this point, if you want to put that sidewalk out, your tables out on the sidewalk, the current fee is for you, six hundred dollars. If it were to have a work session and this council decided by other criteria that it could be dropped, then I guess we could rebate your fee. But if this council by criteria decides that's not enough, guess what, next year it goes up. So this year I.
I'm very patient, we can wait until this could be resolved.
So you're saying you don't want?
I'm trying to see what's going to happen and then we'll go from there.
Okay, so at this point, you're not putting up your table, your fence, you're not going to operate outside?
I'm trying to see what's happening right now.
Okay?
Okay.
So I think what this council needs to do is some research, figure out what other municipalities are doing, how they're handling it. Find criteria that works for our community, that, um, makes good to our taxpayers. Make sure that we're taking care of them and protecting them as well. But for now, I don't see a motion. Does anybody disagree? Anybody want to make a motion of any sort?
Technically, it's a table, but.
Well, there's no real.
I moved to, moved to the next agenda, you know?
I, I, I have one of them going to be doing some homework on this.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure all of us will be.
We appreciate it, thank you for considering this list.
Of course, we love you guys.
Thank you. We love being here too.
I'm going to make a motion to table this indefinitely until we can have the discussions we need to have and to do the research we need to do. I'd be looking for support.
Support.
Motion by Calendino, support by O'Donnell, any further discussion from council?
Is going to be, at this point, fee standard is?
Yeah, there's no, it's status quo for now. Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Secora.
Yes.
Trezzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
We do love both of you guys.
Thank you so much.
Sometimes it's hard to say no, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
Super lightning quick, Ms. McGrail, do you happen to know how I can find the enabling ordinance for that sidewalk? I, I'm having a whale of a time trying to find.
The enabling ordinance, I don't know if there's an ordinance as much as there's probably just a vote of council to provide a lease, we would need an ordinance for that.
We have all the archives of the minutes, uh, two thousand thirteen and up, you can search on the internet.
So it's not actually a lease, it's a license to allow them to use it. So therefore, if they didn't pay, we wouldn't have to evict them, it's just a license to be able to use it. So I don't know that you'd need, you wouldn't need an ordinance for that, but there would have been a vote of council at some point establishing that, that fee amount.
So if it was then.
Approving the licensing.
I'm just going to go on the wayback machine. I think it came about during the era of Chuck's Oyster Bar. Would be about the first time that, um, the owner of that establishment, um, petitioned council or through the mayor's office and.
And I'm thinking that's about two thousand and five.
I, I think before that.
Before that.
Is it before that?
Slightly before. In and about the same time or slightly before that.
So it's probably pre-two thousand and five is where we should start.
In and about the same time, I know it came up, it was licensing even back then.
Right.
That, that I know of, cause I had to actually have them take it down because of snow removal and things like that.
Wasn't there first like an event fee where it cost them so much to put up the tents? Cause they put it partially on the sidewalk and partially in the parking spots. And then they went from that into the, decided, it was, I can't remember if that was Satman already with that, but there was. We had a licensing fee per event to put the tent up, cause that included inspections and everything else and, so.
We're going, we're going to do some research and we'll get to the bottom of it. We're not going to solve anything. it. We're not going to solve anything tonight, obviously. Thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is Mr. Sam Alavade. Say your name, Sam. Could you go up to the podium, please?
Thanks, Sam Alvarado, Department of Michigan Military Purple Heart Commander. And I was invited here to read, was I, am I supposed to read this?
No, I'll, I'll read it.
Okay.
I just want everyone to be refreshed what we're doing tonight.
Pardon me, I, very hard to hear.
Last, at last council meeting, we were asked to join the Purple Heart Trails Project. We voted unanimously to do so and we were directed at that time that the first step was to adopt a resolution, a proclamation that the city was, was going to join the project. So that's what we've done tonight. You're a fresh face tonight. I think you had a prior engagement last month. So I would very much like to hear your version of the, of, you know, what the organization is, what it does, and what we're looking forward to here. And then I'll read the proclamation.
As far as me personally, when I came back from Vietnam, I didn't want to say I was in Vietnam. I didn't want anyone to say I was in the military. And to be honored like we are today for serving and honoring all veterans, now, it's so different than when I came back. You know, I, I can't begin to tell you how bad it was. You know, I came out, oh, let me see. I had some issues with my, with my wounds, so I started going to the VA Hospital in Ann Arbor. And through that, I met other veterans that were talking about, hey, man, you know, do this and do that. And I said, no, I don't want nothing to do with that. But then slowly, I started acknowledging that, you know, things are changing. And things, the only reason they're changing is because of the Vietnam veterans that we were treated when we came back. So, but I'd really like to introduce this lady right here. She is a spark plug. Wow, you know? But, but all I can say is that I was wounded three times. I was 19 years old when I first got wounded and I was 20 years old when I came home. I got wounded, I got shot, I got stabbed. I was a medic in a reconnaissance platoon. And then because of my size, 40 pounds ago, I volunteered to go in the tunnels. So they were wondering, what's this guy, a medic, volunteering to go in the tunnels? When the unit that I was in, in my recon team, there was two medics. And so our lieutenant and our platoon sergeant says, well, go ahead. So the first tunnel I went into, I had contact. I went into 11 tunnels and I had contact in four. The last one is when I got stabbed. And so I survived. I was pretty sick, you know, the infections, you know, but here I am, what, 40 pounds later?
Well, Sam, we're honored to have you here tonight and we thank, we all thank you for your service to our country. I'd love to hear a little bit of background about the Purple Hearts Trail project.
Yes. Sue gave me, how many communities you gave me tonight? Four?
Four, yeah.
Yes. I'm going to call our organization. And the Purple Heart Trail acknowledges all the communities, cities, villages, Mackinac Island, we just got Mackinac Island on there. And who else there? We just recently, Armada?
Armada.
Yes, Holly. And so we're trying to make this big. We're trying to make the state of Michigan a Purple Heart state, I-75 a Purple Heart highway. So it's really something to acknowledge, you know, guys like, like I can say myself, where before I didn't, I didn't want to say anything that I served in Vietnam or, you know. And all three of my wives, you know, they said, you know, what's the matter with you? You know?
That's awesome.
Finally, I got one, you know. No, she, I really didn't realize her master's was in psychology, you know? So she, I was her best client. And this is my senior vice. Ron, you have anything to say?
You can tell we're getting old.
We, we all are. Don't worry.
My name is Ron Ammott. I served with the Marines in Vietnam.
Semper Fi.
Semper Fi. And they didn't waste no time getting to me. I got there in 15 January 68. I was wounded. 16 February 68, I was in the Marine Corps six months and one day. 19 years old in combat.
Wow.
And I still carry about three pieces of scrap metal in me. And I was a grunt. Everybody said, how do you get the name? Well, when it rains, it's hot. You can't send the tracks in, you can't send the birds up. Where are you going to send them? The guys are going to be on the ground, pound of the grunts. They're going to complain all the way in, they're going to complain all the way out. That's how we got our nickname. Ironically, that's how we got our nickname. But like Commander said, that when I came back, it took me almost 28 years to talk about it. And my wife, she just, you know, we really had odds, but luckily, we, we sat down and we had a long talk. And this past September, we just celebrated our 50th month anniversary. Same woman. But yeah, a lot of guys don't want to do nothing to do with it. You know, they just, I just last year buried three friends and their wives that shoved in their DD-214 and asked me, what's this? And I said, that tells you what he had, what he got in combat and everything else. Each of them had two Bronze Stars, Silver Star, all three of them had a Purple Heart, but they never told their family. A lot of guys come back like that. They don't want nothing to do about it. Like they said, it's a year in their life they want to erase. But each of the run, you can't make them do it either. So if you do, you're going to alienate them and that, you don't want that. But again, like Commander said, you know, we're here to support our Purple Heart, not only the ones that are recipients of it, but also the ones who pay the ultimate price and their families. We can't forget about those families because they pay a price for them. Their loved ones being gone too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your service.
I would also like to include that at the end of the reading of the proclamation, before the meeting is dismissed, that I would like to step outside and play taps.
We'd be honored to have you do that, sir.
Sue, do you have anything to say?
No.
You sure?
It took 34 years for my husband to tell me. Not until I started doing this.
Can you, can you step up to the mic? We want our residents to hear what you got to say tonight.
Not until my husband told me after 34 years of marriage. I knew he had the Purple Heart, but I had never heard how he got it until I started trying to get these communities on the Purple Heart Trail. The day of the Village of Armada, that was my first community I went to because that's where I live. That afternoon, he broke down in our living room and told me what happened to him. That made me all the more convinced that I had to go to every community around and get them on this trail. These men need to know that we care and that we remember their sacrifice because it is a high price that they paid.
Well, we're glad you came to Utica. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to read the proclamation right now. 2023 proclamation proclaiming Utica, Michigan, a Purple Heart city. Whereas the people of the city of Utica have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas, veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from the city of Utica who have served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas, many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. And whereas, General George Washington on August 7, 1782, by general order, established the Badge of Military Merit, an award for exemplary service in the Continental Army during the War of Independence. And whereas, in 1932, with the assistance of General Douglas MacArthur, the Badge of Military Merit was revived and redesigned as the Purple Heart, a valor award for the United States Army personnel. And whereas, in 1942, President Franklin D. Roosevelt, by Executive Order 9277, retroactive to December 6, 1941, expanded the awarding of the Purple Heart to members of all branches of the armed forces of the United States and established a uniform application of standards for the award in the Army and Navy. And whereas, many citizens of our community have earned the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with enemy force, construed as a singularly meritorious act of essential service. And now therefore, be it resolved, that the city council proclaims the city of Utica as a Purple Heart city honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedom enjoyed by all Americans. So moved. Motion by Robinson.
Support.
Support by Deanna. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Trenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanna.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to step out and play taps now?
Absolutely. And we'll, we'll give a moment of silence so we can hear you. Please, make sure, Mr. Lang, could you make sure the door is propped open for these gentlemen? Thank you.
And gentlemen, also, sir?
Wait a second, wait a second, guys, stand around.
You don't get told enough, but welcome home. And thank you for what you've done.
Welcome home.
You are truly American heroes. Absolutely. And we need more.
When I came back, there was a woman in the airport out in LA. There was me, a corpsman, artillery guys. She walked up and she says, you boys just back from Vietnam? I said, yes, ma'am. She says, good. Why, why'd you bother coming back? This country don't want you.
I'll tell you what, there's an army veteran, army veteran right there, Chief Kaluzny, Navy veteran right here, Army veteran, Marine Corps veteran right here. And we are absolutely 110% behind you and supportive of everything you did to make our lives better. So thank you for your sacrifice.
The movie Platoon was based in my unit.
Wow.
I've never seen anybody's ever seen that.
We'll be talking to you soon. Are you coming back to join us for the rest of me? Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody stand.
Yep, we can all stand. Let me see, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to mention to you folks, and it is actually the next item on my agenda, is the Memorial Day Ceremony at Memorial Park is on the 28th at 2:00 PM. It's a very short, very somber event. Following the event, everybody congregates at the American Legion Post 351 for fellowship, pizza, cocktails.
So that would be on Sunday?
That's the Sunday before Memorial Day. You're all invited and we'd be honored to have you there.
Absolutely.
Thank you once again. Well, I've heard that too many times. The older I get, unfortunately, I'm spending more time in front of coffins with flags draped over them and, very touching. Thank you. From your report, next item, the Puppy Parade was a huge success. We had a lot of dignitaries show up, including half of the Macomb County Board of Commissioners. Mark Hackle was in presence. Our state rep, Nate Shannon, supported the event. We had the dynamic Genesee County Sheriff Chris Swanson, who just tore up the crowd. He was dynamic and great. So yeah, the Puppy Parade, we had more people than we had last year. We had 23 rescue and advocacy groups in attendance. So it was a major success. Everybody's looking forward to next year. I think this event just continues to grow every year. So thank you to council for approving it. Thank you to our police, our DPW and our fire for their support, keeping us all safe and making sure the parks look beautiful. Everyone did a great job.
And I did, Mr. Mayor, I did reach out to you via email, but I want to say it publicly. Fantastic work. It was a great event, very well-run. Everybody had fun, including Biscuit.
Most importantly, right?
Yes, most importantly.
We did have a very scary accident that involved fire in the city a couple weeks ago now. A young Utica resident boy was injured pretty severely, spent some time in the hospital. His father was planning to attend tonight to personally thank our fire and police. Unfortunately, the son's getting prepped for some more surgery, for some skin graft surgery, and regretfully was not able to be here tonight. But he asked that I thank our fire and police for everything they did. Could have been a much worse outcome if not for the great response and the great care that his son received. So thank, please relay that to our fire and police crews. They did a fantastic job. That's all I have tonight. Any other reports from council? No one? No report from assessing. Mr. Hicks, building.
We didn't need a mayor and council. Last month at council, I had presented to you folks the increase in fees. And I told you then that once we got them in place and we saw how they worked, I'd be coming back to maybe have to tweak a few here and there. And that's why I'm here tonight. Basically, on all three items tonight, what we were going after was the, a formula to figure out the fees for new construction cost, the addition alteration cost. And it was, you had to take the square footage of the property or of the house and multiply it and then divide it. And the formula was just too confusing for everybody. So we simplified it and more or less went back to what we had originally, except we had changed the fee a little bit. And it all works out. Basically, what we do is we take, in this case, it would be 1,250 per thousand for the cost of construction. And that's it. It's simple. Boom. Okay? Instead of having to take this figure, that square footage, divide it by this and multiply it by that. This way, it just comes out nice and simple. Contractors enjoy it. They understand it a lot better than our old or our newest form that we wanted. And the same thing goes with the addition alteration. And the only other thing that we would change was the bond for any construction being done. It would be set at, at the discretion of the building official, which is myself. Normally, we do a $5,000 bond, but on such projects as maybe a driveway being poured or a small shed being built or something like that, I'm not going to stick a $5,000 bond on something like that. So I would deem it necessary, you know, maybe $100 or 150. And mainly, the bond is set so we ensure that the project gets done. So if you get somebody building a brand-new house in the city, they post a $5,000 bond, that bond assures us and them that they get back if they complete everything they're supposed to do. It's not going to cover, Bill and I talked, and he said, you know, it doesn't cover if they have to break up into the street and hit the sewers and stuff like that and do any kind of maintenance or repair or tap in. But it's, it's a fee that we feel comfortable with, they're used to in most communities, and it assures them and us that the work is going to get done.
If we could get a motion and then we could deliberate if necessary?
I'll make a motion to approve the tweaking.
It's language mainly.
Yeah, the language of the building department, the fee schedule and the bond.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Trenzi. Any discussion from council? I would ask it, when we went back to the flat fee, did we stick with the 20% increase? Do we know?
No, 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 no. We didn't, we didn't do the, that wasn't the flat fee on that, okay? What we did was, the old fee was 1020 per thousand. What we did was, the old fee was $10.20 per thousand, and we went to $1,250 per thousand.
Okay. So, roughly, a 20%.
About 20%.
About a 20% increase. Any further discussion?
These, uh, this is officially simple enough for me to understand. So, that means it should be good enough for anybody.
All right. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mayor and council. Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is library. Ms. Francis.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. In your packet, there is a letter of resignation from Library Board Trustee Nancy Carter. She has served almost five years on the board and was a great advocate for the library. We appreciate her service, and we are very sorry to see her go. This does leave a vacancy on our board. There are two residents that submitted letters of interest and included, those are also included in your packet. One is from Megan Rashawn Gerbino, and the other is from Bill, or William Ozledel, whose letter I submitted on his behalf. After reviewing and, you know, looking at everything, both, I feel, would be great. And we feel lucky to have two qualified residents interested in being a part of our board. I do agree with the recommendation given by our board president, Bar Montag, to appoint Bill Ozledel to fill Nancy's seat. I know she emailed you guys earlier with her recommendation. If anybody didn't get it, I have copies. You know, Mr. Ozledel has been a longtime Utica library patron. He is very passionate about our library. He has served time on council, as you know, so we just.
And planning as well.
And plan, yep. So, I just feel like his knowledge and experience would make him a great asset to the library board should you choose to appoint him.
So, Ms. Francis is looking for a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Ozledel to be a library, Library Board of Trustee.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Trenzie, support by Socora. Any discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, is, general question to Ms. Montag or Ms. Francis, is Ms. Gerbino, Gerbino? If there's another vacancy, could we encourage her to apply? I mean, this, you know, I read her letter here. By the way, I love Bill Ozledel, so the answer is yes. But, um, but, I mean, she's a sixth through 12th grade school librarian. She clearly seems very passionate. I wish we could take.
Do you have a maximum on your board?
I know, right?
I don't know per your charter, do you have a maximum?
Yeah, we're a five-member board. I say, I'm not even on the board.
Is that, is that per charter though, or is it just as a?
That is because of the way we were established as a library. So, um, yeah.
You know, we're, we're in discussion? Okay, so I think that Mr. Ozledel is a fantastic option. But I also appreciate Mrs. Gerbino. She brings some real historical, you know, or work, working knowledge to this, to this. I mean, I can't, I mean, although Bill's great, and he's been around the city for a long time, and I fully support the idea of bringing him on, on the board. But I think it's worth discussion, worth the discussion of having a professional librarian that has, my guess is probably a degree in that area, and that she's working at an elementary school in that, in that capacity. I think there's real value there. If there was a chance to opportunity to have more than one, I think that, and we're certain, the five, right, that we're, okay, that's just the way it is or not?
That's why I asked.
All right, yeah, so, okay, yeah, I just thought it's worth discussing.
Is there any other volunteer position?
Very, very, both of them are very qualified.
Absolutely. Is there any other volunteer position that she could be brought into the fray?
So, as far as the, the position goes, so Nancy's term technically would be up this, at the end of this year. So, whoever does take that seat would be filling it up until that time and then would need to decide, did they like it, did they want to continue? Is there anybody else that maybe is also interested? Because at any time when a term limit is up, even if that trustee wants to get reappointed, it's still an opportunity for another resident to put their bid in if they would like their, their letter of interest. So, I would be coming before you again in December, either asking you to reappoint this person who's been on since, well, tonight, or look at whatever other interested parties might be at that time. So, I don't know. I mean, yeah, it was, it was, you know, looking at both of them, it was one of those things where, you know, I'm like, wow. I, we are pretty lucky to be in that situation. You know, when we look at, and I know just in the past, board members have always, you know, we, first thing is looking at, okay, well, who is a library patron? Who comes into this library? Who knows this library and is obviously a supporter of our library? Those are the people that are gonna, you know, make those decisions for our building based off of their own experiences, the history that they know. And so, it just naturally went towards, you know, Bill, who's just been, I mean, this is experience and his love of our library is really what it came down to. So, but again, I mean, come December, maybe he doesn't want to do it anymore.
So, were, this position is only going to fill the balance of this term?
The rest of Nancy's term, yeah. And then, just like how I would have had to come before you to, if she was gonna continue, I would have to come before you in December and either reappoint or, so it's the same situation. So, it's really just right now to fill the rest of Nancy's term till December.
Perfect. Any other discussion from council?
I'll just say, there was a question asked about the number and whether we could change the bylaws. I'm looking at the statute right now. It does say five people.
Okay, great. Thank you for doing that. Yeah, I feel, I feel that Ms. Gerbino is exceptionally qualified.
Can I take that back?
Yeah.
It goes on, the original board has to be five. You can change it up to nine, but it needs to be an odd number of people.
Anyone else want to join? Brad? Three, I'll be right quick. I think Bill. Bill?
I'm a do-gooder. I'll do it.
Well, technically, though, there can only be one council representative on the library board.
That is correct.
Yeah, Ken on there right now, right? Yeah. I bet you're tons of fun. I bet you're just tons of fun on there.
He can go.
I don't want to be sexist, but it's a very enjoyable evening to go and spend.
I mean, either way, we're not out anything, you know? I mean, we're still gaining a, a great member of our board. So, I mean, it's really not a wrong.
I'm, I'm just always reluctant to turn away residents who volunteer to do stuff because sometimes it's hard to get that energy. If there's any way to bring Ms. Gerbino into the fray, find something for her, you know, that she'd also like to do.
Mr. Mayor, can we open up, can we open up to seven member and ask if there's any more applicants willing?
Well, I think the library gets to make those decisions, not us.
Very good.
Is there any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Socora.
Yes.
Trenzie.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations to Mr. Ozledel. And thank you to Ms. Gerbino for volunteering. I know, I'm sure it was a very difficult choice because both seemed very, very qualified. Chief Willsec from fire is excused tonight. Councilman Ryan, did he leave anything?
No, just the correspondence that you already read off.
Excellent. Thank you. Interim Chief Kaluzny, police report tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Have some good news from the police department side. I know a, a number of meetings ago, it's probably going back probably a year and a half ago, Chief Cody approached council about a FEMA grant regarding upgrading the generator at the police department and also at the fire department. This is something that Captain Orlovsky had, had kind of spearheaded, had rode and, and gone through. We received notification from the state probably about two weeks ago that we have been approved for the grant. All paperwork has moved forward. It initially was a 25% match. It's down to a 10% match.
Whoa.
So, we are currently in the process of soliciting bids for the project and hoping that the June council meeting will have something to present to council and, and move forward on this. This is a great opportunity for both departments, for the police and fire, to, to get both of our generators upgraded, modernized, and use the, the federal FEMA funds.
Will that generator run the whole building?
I believe so, yes. There, I believe they're, they're looking at upgrading the fireside to run the whole building and then same on the base side.
Currently, the generator would not run the city office.
Yeah.
So, the new generator, if power went down, we'd get, the whole building here would be covered.
Excellent.
So, hopefully, something, something positive moving forward. Another thing that we have going on in the police department, beginning of this budget year, I'd approached and explained about Lexapro policies. And we've been, something that was approved on this budget. I've been working on this project since the start of July. And come this upcoming Tuesday, I'm gonna start rolling out the policies. So, it's taken me that long to get through and, and update. All our policies are fully updated, modernized, they're state, they're federally vetted. It's, it's really an exciting project to get up and, up and moving. So, I just want to let council know that, that things are, are moving forward and, and looking good.
A week on the job, hustling. No kidding. Excellent.
The, the last bit of good news, come the June council meeting, I plan to bring two more police candidates up in front of council to formally swear in. We have two right now that are in the current Macomb Police Academy, and they graduate this Friday and are looking to start on Monday. So, come the June meeting, we'll have two brand-new candidates. And we are nearing full capacity at the police department, which I'm very happy to say. It's, it's been a number of years and finally, finally upping those numbers and getting up to, to where we'll be fully staffed. So, some exciting news moving forward.
And it helps that they all seem to be great people, too. Every one I've met has just been phenomenal, so.
Yes. It's, it's, it's been a very, very welcomed reception for, for all the officers. Everybody's excited with everybody always working. We're, we're getting a lot of accolades from, from the citizens. Just yesterday, Bruce Township had, had reached out. Some of our officers had assisted Bruce Township's fire on an, on an accident that they had, or an accident that they had with their ambulance. And the battalion chief had sent a thank-you letter to professionalism of our officers and was very thankful. So, our, our new guys are, are doing really great things. So, that's, that's, that's all we have on from the police department side.
Thank you. Interim Chief, Mr. Lang, DPW report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Nothing on the agenda tonight, a couple of updates. One, specific to the dog park. If, um, if we could ask, I don't know, maybe through the Facebook page, ask the residents and users of the dog park to please be diligent about picking up after their pets. That would be most appreciated. Weed whipping through the park and it's not pleasant. It, honestly, it's not pleasant. We have a new employee that we initiated to the department. And his sentiment was not taste great, less filling. But anyway, that being said, if we, if we could, if we could ask, you know, just put it out, I think, I'm hopeful that it was leftovers from the winter months when, you know, things can go unnoticed and maybe got lost in the snow, which we didn't really have, but anyway.
There were a huge amount of dogs in the dog park for, on the Puppy Parade day.
Sure.
And that might have contributed to the, uh.
It might have for the after effect, but actually, the, the incident occurred prior to in preparation for such. But it's nevertheless, if we could ask, that would be, it's a, it's a, just dealing with the dog pots and the bags is a, is a nasty, nasty job.
Yeah.
It really is. It really is. Just dealing with, you know, and it's kind of daily or bi-daily, but it's a lot, yeah. So, if the residents or, you know, parkgoers could just be, you know, really vigilant about.
We'll get something in the city.
That would be just really, for the guys, it would, it would be nice. That being said, uh, with the parks, we're, you know, everything's up and open and in full swing. We're doing our best to keep up on things. It's grass season, lots of rain. I'm sure we'll be asking, you know, there'll be some nasty grams and postings about keeping your grass cut, ourselves included. We're doing the best we can. Some drainage issues that have been floating around the city. We're finally getting to the point where we can deal with that in case you have residents poking at you. And then, lastly, Heritage Park, the canoe launch. The canoe launch over the years has been a really, a welcomed asset to the community. It's suffered some wear and tear and damage. We actually threw to help of the folks at Messina, Messina Trucking, Utica Equipment, I believe they're called, across from Irma's. They actually lifted the, the, we took the end section, which is the actual canoe launch itself. We took the end sections out with their help, and it's down at our facility, and we're rebuilding it from scratch. I commissioned, one of my last tasks was to commission the guys to jump on that and do it. We're about, about done with one section, and we'll be moving on to the second section. I think I told the mayor three weeks. If I said three weeks tonight, I'll have plenty of time. But it's, we're gonna be right in and around that, probably even closer to, about two more weeks, it'll be back in the water. So, if you have anybody asking questions or you noticed it looks a little different, it is at those. So, we're, we're looking forward to getting those back in. And, you know, 10 to 15 years of use out of it, maybe before, maybe longer. So, that's kind of what's going on with us.
Bill, I have a question, and I'm glad you brought up lawn cutting because I was, well, Utica resident Brown Alley was asking me about the, the land that's by the packing, between the packing plant and Brown Alley. You know that piece a lot there?
I do.
Is that city-owned? Is it our responsibility to cut?
It is. It is. We, we do it. We haven't been out there yet this year, but we do it. We do it as part of like our weed mowing program. It's not something, actually, that property tends to be encroached on by the neighbors. Sometimes I've no, I've had, I've had folks in that area complain about the height of the grass. And then, we mow it, and then they host a, a family reunion out there. So, it can be of interest for some folks that live in that area. And likewise, but yeah, we do that. It's not on a regular cutting. It's probably gets done once a month. Because it's, it's not really in the residential area. It's part of the packing plant property. We never did it at all. We used to just mow around the guardrails and let the rest of it go like the packing plant. And because we noticed, it, it appears as though people utilize that as a cut-through to get out to cats. So, they'll walk, you'll see it. There's a foot trail walking there.
Yeah, I use it to walk my dog, don't you?
So, you're aware of what I'm talking about. So, when we noticed that, it's like, we, we just started mowing it. So, it is, it is part of our routine, but it's not like, it's not the top highest priority. We don't mow it like the other parks and things like that. But it does get mowed by us.
Appreciate it.
That's it. That's all I have this evening, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Thank you. Treasurer, Mr. Pat Anster. He's also our.
Does he get paid extra?
He's also our, our video camera operator, so we'll give him a minute to get to the stage here.
Good evening, sir.
Mayor and council, you have two items on the agenda. The first one is treasurer's report. The city of Utica maintains several bank accounts with J.P. Morgan Chase, which is our primary financial institution. These accounts are what they call earnings credit accounts as opposed to interest-bearing. The, um, the balances of cash that we keep in the account earn credits, soft credits to offset the bank fees. Since 2008, interest rates have been so low that the earnings credit was either barely sufficient to cover the fees or totally insufficient. However, with the recent interest rate increases by the Federal Reserve, that situation has changed. And as of the end of March, our earnings credits for this calendar year have exceeded the expected fees for the year. credits for this calendar year have exceeded the expected fees for the year. So, after consultation with JP Morgan Banking Representatives, I am proposing that we flip, switch on these earnings credit accounts, well, on the general earnings credit account, make it a, an interest-bearing account through the end of the calendar year, effective June 1st. It's expected that the interest earnings, the hard interest earnings, will be significant, and still assure that we meet our soft credits to cover the banking fees.
And by significant, he means $121,355.93.
That was based on the interest rates as of the end of March.
They may go up yet.
Have we done this in years prior?
Back in the day.
I'll let Mr. Panerostar. He really did just explain it. In the past, the interest rates were so low that we were on a program that gave us credits towards our fees, because the city has to pay a fee for basically every transaction we make, every check we cash, you know, and whatnot. So, the interest rates were so low that in an interest-bearing mechanism, it wouldn't even cover the fees. Now that interest rates have risen, it not only covers the fee, but you see, there's the potential they're turning a large amount of interest.
I saw that in the email. I'm thinking, somewhere historically, this must have been a viable option, too. Rates had not always been historically low and higher.
2008, he mentioned.
In prior, in years prior to 2008, we had the earnings credit accounts, but we also had money market accounts that were tied to our JP Morgan accounts, that we could move money back and forth without incurring wire fees or ACH transfer fees. So, we kept most of the city's excess cash in those money market accounts. After 2008, JP Morgan got out of that business, and with declining yields, it became more expensive to, for us to make the wire transfers than we were earning on the investments each month. So, we retracted our funds and put them in, in these earnings credit accounts just to cover our fees. Now that the industry has changed and interest rates have risen, they're currently at about 4.5% that we can earn if we go out into the money market, 1.9% in the interest-bearing. I'm looking to start with the interest-bearing account, see how that works, and see how much work it is, time-wise, to start reintroducing some of the other options to increase our yield, just one step at a time.
Sure. So, Mr. Panerostar?
I'll make a motion that we approve the change and go into the interest-bearing account.
Support.
Motion by Trenzey, support by Sikora. Any discussion from council?
No, I'm going. Phil, do you remember the old commercial paper days? We're going back a long time ago, you guys.
I'd like to thank Phil for, you know, we're always looking for ways to be more efficient. We're always looking for ways to, you know, generate more revenue from our investments, from our surplus cash, and this definitely fits in that. So, Phil, thank you for working hard for the residents.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Your next item, sir?
Our next item is entitled "The Low-Income Household Assistance Program," or LEWAP, as the state wants to call it. This is a federal program that was instituted by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in response to the COVID-19 emergency. It is handled through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the Macomb County Community Action Agency. I became aware of this program a couple of months ago, when I was attending a webinar, not a webinar, but a Zoom meeting with Great Lakes Water Authority, and they brought in the Macomb Community Action and introduced this program, which is designed to help our water and sewer customers who have fallen behind in our, in danger of having their accounts shut off. At this point, the city clerk and I are asking council for a motion to authorize Mayor Calendrino to sign the memorandum of understanding. But to do, the authorization is necessary to participate, but at this point, we're still investigating the program, because there is a lot of work involved. It's a federal program, and there are requirements that our water department will have to institute in order to comply with the federal privacy rules. And we're not sure if it's even something that we can take on. So, we're asking for approval, subject to Mayor Calendrino's ultimate decision, whether we carry it forward or not. Otherwise, we would have to come back in June, and this program does expire September 30. So, it's a very short window, yes.
As stated, Mr. Panerostar was looking for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Trenzey.
I'll support that.
Support by Robinson. Any discussion from council?
So, this program is only good through September 30th?
Yes.
So, that means any application has to be made for up to September 30th. After that, there's no relief, no nothing, the program ends?
Correct.
Okay, so...
The resident would have, what we would have to do is put together a marketing scheme, have that reviewed by Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and then we could get that information out to the residents. What would you say, Lori, we're talking shut-off notices, average, less than 20, 30?
The original notices are about 50.
50 a month. But it's going to take at least a month just to get the process in place, and then, then the residents would have to contact Macomb Community Action and apply for assistance.
So, when somebody, just for clarification, when you said there's 50 a month of shut-off notices, of those 50, what, how many would you say you actually shut off? Or do they, is it something that because they receive it, they decide to come in and pay some part bill to get them off the shut-off notice?
One to two a month get shut off, on average, I would say, for non-payment. The rest of them pay.
Again, they have to qualify as low income.
Do you see a pattern, by chance, in the people that you do shut off? Are they...
Absolutely.
They are identified? I'm sorry, are they, are these people potentially identified as low income, or have they, have they asked for relief as low-income residents?
They have not asked us. We've had the WRAP program that Macomb County offers to residents. They do have to meet certain income criteria, which I don't, I mean, it's on our website. It's in our office there for people.
So, I guess, I mean, if we authorize it, you have the ability to possibly move forward, but it's news that'll have to see if the timeframe even works, and if...
If we are, if it's, if we can even meet all the requirements. And there's a lot of people, you know...
And you have an audience for it, too. You know, is there, is there an actual need, I guess, if you had a handful of people asking for this type of assistance?
No one's asked, but I don't know how public this got from, from LEWAP.
I don't know.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. And I believe you have another item, sir?
I do?
OMID, yep.
OMID, oh, I'm sorry. Didn't show up on my report here. Ah, yes, the Oakland-Macomb Interceptor Drain, Drainage District, Drainage Board, that isn't enough drains. I don't know what is. Determined in late April to issue drain bonds, Series 2020B, 2023 issue, to finance improvements to the North Interceptor East Arm and Northeast Pump Sanitary Sewer Pump Station. These are assets that the OMID took responsibility for from Great Lakes Water Authority a few years ago, I believe it was 2019, because the Drainage District was convinced that they could restore and maintain the assets more efficiently than Great Lakes Water Authority, because the OMID has access to lower bond costs. And at the time, Great Lakes Water Authority was doing all the maintenance and passing the costs along to all of the members of OMID, of which the City of Utica is one. We represent about just over 1% of the Oakland-Macomb Interceptor Drainage District. So, anyway, I received a letter from the Drainage District a couple of weeks ago, asking the City of Utica to decide whether or not it wanted to participate in the bond via bond payments amortized over 20 years, or to prepay the debt and avoid in excess of $80,000 in interest. Now, normally in the past, the bond issues were very large, and our water and sewer system terribly unfunded, and my recommendation was always eat the interest and pay over the life of the bond. However, this bond issue is only, for our purposes, $169,300. The debt, as I said, on that is $81,000 over 20 years. So, I looked at our cash balances and what we have coming down the pike in the Water and Sewer Department, and figured that saving the utility user $80,000 was well worth it. $169,000 divided by roughly 2,000 customers, it's a relatively small amount of money. So, I am recommending that we adopt the prepayment resolution that was enclosed, and notify the OMID of our intent.
Excuse me, Phil, what was the amount that we would have to prepay?
The prepayment is $169.3. If we chose not to prepay, the principal would be $172,164, because there are bond issuance costs associated with that, and then interest in excess of $81,000. That's, that's an anticipated interest, because they haven't issued the bonds yet, and...
Rates are going up.
The, since, since the Drainage Board adopted this schedule, the Federal Reserve has raised interest rates, which those interest rates don't directly affect municipalities and government agencies, but they do have an indirect effect on the markets.
So, Mr. Panerostar would be looking for a motion to adopt the prepayment resolution? And, well, let's get that motion on the table first, and we'll split this into two.
I'll make that motion, that we adopt the prepayment.
Motion by Trenzey.
Support.
Support by Sikora. Any discussion from council? You know, when Phil and I first discussed this, I was thrilled that the city is even in the position to decide whether or not to prepay this and avoid all that interest going into our water and sewer bills for our residents. You know, avoiding, you know, $81,000 in interest fees and bond fees, that's, that's incredible, that we can avoid that. So, you know, again, this is an example of trying to be smart, trying to spend our money, you know, fiscally, responsibly, and I commend Phil for doing the analysis required for that.
Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. And the second half of Mr. Panerostar's agenda item tonight is a motion to amend the fiscal year 2023 Sewer and Water Fund budget, increasing General Ledger Account 592536992010 bond principal interceptor by $169,000, $169,300.
So moved.
Motion by Trenzey, support by Sikora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Trenzey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Excellent work, Phil. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else to report tonight?
Just one more thing. I would like to remind everyone that May is National Ride Your Bicycle to Work Month. So, if you see my trusty Bianchi sitting outside, that's because I'm taking it seriously.
And what's the name of the bike again, Phil?
The... Oh, the nickname is Infectious.
Infectious, that's it.
Because the color is gangrene.
Very good. Madam Clerk, report from administration.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would just like to report that the Utica, the UCS School Bonds both passed. We had, I wanted to thank my election workers. We had combined all three polls at Flickinger for this election and had minimal problems. So, I just wanted to thank them on a successful night.
And again, trying to be smart, trying to be efficient. We combined all three precincts at Flickinger for this election. I think we did a pretty good job getting the word out, because I didn't see too, too much confusion. There were a few people that came in and asked, but for the most part, it seemed to go very smoothly.
There was three residents that came in and asked. We did get signage up over there. It was a rainy, windy day, but yeah, we had three, three that had asked about.
Great job. Anything else to, anything else to present tonight?
Um, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, any report from Parks and Rec?
I just want to let the residents know, since we are kind of coming upon it, since Ju, June, obviously, schools will be out. So, June 15th, Parks and Rec will be having at Grant Park, the Reptarium event that we had last year, and I think August, which was a very successful event. The kids had so much fun. So, we're doing it again, but this, this year, we're doing it on June 15th at 1:00 at Grant Park. The Reptarium brings their, it's their zoo-to-you. They bring their, their reptiles, get to hold the snakes, play with the turtles, and it was a very fun event. So, it's going to be happening June 15th. You know, let's celebrate school getting out and have some fun with reptiles.
What time is that?
I'm sorry?
1:00 P.M.
1:00 P.M., yes. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No report from historic district... Uh, no report from historic district commission. Our city attorney, Ms. McGreal.
So it is my honor and pleasure, Mayor and Council, to be able to bring to you a contract for a new chief of police in the city. Matt Kluzney, as you all know, is currently serving as interim chief. I've submitted both an AIS and a contract, providing for Chief Kluzney's appointment as chief, interim chief Kluzney's appointment as chief, and the related contract. It can be done in one motion if you so desire, or you can handle it in two different contracts, or two different motions if you want. It'd be motion appoint interim chief Matt Kluzney to chief of police and to approve the contract just presented.
I'll make a motion to do what Ms. McGreal just said.
And I'll support that.
Motion by Sakura, support by Robinson. Any discussion from council?
No-brainer.
I would say if this vote is approved, I've talked to interim chief Kluzney, and we would be doing his pinning and his ceremony at the June meeting, so we get his family here.
If.
If. A big if. It's a big if.
We had concerns about whether it would be approved here today, so we didn't want to have his kids here, you know, just in case.
So if there's no further discussion from council, madam clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Finally, I don't have to keep saying, "Good morning, interim chief Kluzney."
It's nice to actually be presenting contracts like those, as opposed to some other ones I've had to bring to council's attention.
At this point in the meeting, we open the floor for a public comment from anyone in the audience. Is there anyone tonight that would like to speak?
Thank you for waiting the whole evening.
Tell your friends.
Three minutes. If you could give us your name and address, please.
I don't know if this matters, but I'm not from Utica.
It doesn't matter.
21821 Alger Street. My name is Lindsay LaPonce.
That's in St. Clair Shores.
St. Clair Shores, yes.
I saw her last night at Grossman Farms.
Impressive.
So my name is Lindsay, and I'm on the board for the Autism Society of Greater Detroit. And we're just going around to different city council meetings to kind of introduce our group to the communities that we serve. About eight years ago, a handful of small chapters of the Autism Society of America closed their doors, and now they are moving towards a model of one autism society per state. And we are going to be that for Michigan. And we are pretty new. We just had our launch in March, actually. And we're completely volunteer-led, 501(c)(3). We service Oakland, Macomb, Wayne, St. Clair, and Washtenaw Counties. With the support of our parent organization, our plans are to cover the entire state within the next five years. Our main purpose is to begin the connection between the community service organizations, state services, and those affected by ASC. We offer a 24/7 information referral line and resources on our website. We also have some local initiatives, including social meetups and virtual support groups. We're getting a youth-led community therapeutic garden started right now. We're breaking ground on that. So we're pretty excited. And just wanted to get our names out there to make sure that we're helping as many people as we can.
Could you give the URL for your-
Yeah, that's, I'm just getting to that.
Oh, sorry.
So for more information, you can look at, look us up on Facebook or our website if you want to sign up for any volunteer projects or anything and just find information. It is www-autismsocietygreaterdetroit.org. And that was pretty much it for me.
That's Autism Society Greater Detroit?
GreaterDetroit.org.
Dot org. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Any questions for Lindsay? Lindsay, right?
Yes.
Any questions for Lindsay?
Thank you for what you're doing.
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for hearing me out.
Yeah, I saw you last night at Grossman Farms. Yeah, I walked in the meeting, I waved to you.
Or he's stalking you, I'm not sure.
I was the police officer that waved to you last night.
Okay.
When I walked in.
Thank you again.
Thank you, everyone, and have a good day.
You, too.
Thank you, thank you.
And I don't think we have anyone else in the audience that hasn't spoken tonight, so I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.